Recording in progress.
Thank you. I'm going to call the Thursday, November 20th Business Meeting of Narbith Borough Council to order. Mr. Spear, open the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stock, follow the order.
Yes, President Bush.
Here.
Vice President Rickards.
Here.
Councilmember Winston.
Here.
Councilmember Barak.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Vadini.
Here.
Councilmember Sanderson.
Here.
And Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
I have no comments this month. Mayor Deutsch?
Just a couple. As you'll see later in the meeting, we have, we are fortunate enough to have a brand-new parking controller in the borough. So please, everyone, mind your Ps and Qs while parking and put your quarters in and mind your time on two-hour limit zones. Just make sure you're obeying because we now have someone on the clock watching. We have the second biggest event in the borough coming up, December 7th. We have Dickens Fest. So with that in mind, please join us and shop downtown 1840th London in Narbith. It's a great time. And thanks to all the hard-working people that put it together and make it work. And when you're doing your holiday shopping this year, please keep in mind your local stores could always use a little support. And please be sure and do your purchases as close to home as you can so to support your local establishments.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Stock, Borough Manager's Report.
Yes, so just wanted to wish all of our outgoing mayor and council member well. And we did have our elections, so congratulations as well to our council members who were re-elected and our new council member who will be starting in January. Just wanted to give an update on the bridge project. So we've been continuing to update the website with information about what's been going on. It's been a little bit quiet in terms of what you've been actually able to see. There was some vegetation clearing, and otherwise it's just going to proceed with some utility work. I know that the contractor was still waiting on a permission to, for that utility work, so I think it's been a little bit on pause, but that is still moving forward. And again, any updates that we're getting from the contractor, we'll be continuing to post on our website. Otherwise, just spending a lot of time kind of wrapping up all of our budget things. We had our annual Liquid Fuels Audit for 2024, so that one went well. We did complete our pension audit, which is not an annual one, but we are required to do it periodically. That also concluded, and no major findings to report. Wrapped up a couple of our capital projects, so you'll see the sidewalks are now complete, so they look great. And then our stormwater bumpouts as well are completed, and Jeff has, and his team have finished putting in all of the vegetation, so we look forward to seeing those grow in over the next couple of years. And that's kind of the big thing. So looking forward to wrapping up the budget, kind of closing out some of the ongoing projects and resetting and starting the new year off with a bang.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to public comment. As a reminder, it's only three minutes, and please begin with your name and your address. So I'll start with folks in the room in a second. If you'd like to, go ahead and make your comment.
So my name is Wade Lord. I live on Stephanie Place. And I am here to talk about the possibility of getting two-hour parking on our street and a sign that says, "No Parking Here at the Corner" at the top of Stephanie Place that is right next to Montgomery Avenue. Right now, there is a house across the street in Laurel Marion that is getting worked on, and the family parks their all four of their cars on our street. And they have, the workers start coming at 7:00 a.m., and they're there until 4:00 or 5:00 every day. And they park behind our driveways and cover the whole street. And I mean, if we had a guest, they would have no place to park. And originally, they said it was going to last through the summer, and the construction workers have told us it is going to be all another year. So it's really, really frustrating. And if you, they park all the way to the corner of Stephanie Place and Montgomery Avenue, and if you're coming up Stephanie Place, a lot of people cut through. They drive in the middle of the road. They drive in the middle of Stephanie Place, and they want to make a left-hand turn to go onto Montgomery Avenue. And if you're a resident or somebody that's trying to get onto Stephanie Place, you have to stop dead on Montgomery Avenue and wait for them to make their left-hand turn, and somebody's just going to come by and just nail, nail us sitting on Montgomery Avenue because they go from Essex to the next light, you know, 50 miles an hour. So that's a real concern, and it's just, it's just terrible. It really is terrible. So we were hoping to petition for this two-hour parking. I've been there for 45 years. This has never happened before. The woman across the street says, "I can leave my car here and not move it. It can stay here every single day as long as it has an inspection sticker on it, and I never have to move it, and it can stay here all year long in the same spot." And I said, "Could you just please not park behind the driveways or move down further or something?" And she goes, "Well, you're not being very neighborly." And I said, "neighborly? I've been here for 45 years. I don't even know who you are." And I said, "You're not being very neighborly, leaving your cars in the same spot for weeks on end." And to give you an example, I like looking at the Bickles Garden in the summer. I have two sets of French doors. There was this gigantic white suburban out there for over four weeks. Didn't move. And I couldn't even see. I couldn't, that's what I saw every time I looked out my doors. And it's just continuing, and I'm hoping that we can do, you know, go forward with this.
All right. So we have a procedure to apply for two-hour parking, but unfortunately, you're going to need, what percentage of the people on the streets? Sixty? Sixty? I think 60% of the houses on the street have to agree on a petition to do it, so your one neighbor isn't going to be enough, but it would be...
So we do have a provision that says if there's fewer than five homes addressed on the street...
There's four.
So there's eight houses that have frontage on the street, but only four are addressed on Stephanie. The other two are addressed on Montgomery Avenue, and two are addressed on North Essex.
Okay.
So you're...
So the provision says that...
But that would mean, though, that per our ordinance, and I did email you about this earlier today, the two-hour limit would result then in only those who are addressed on Stephanie Place would be eligible for the parking permit. So those addressed on Montgomery or North Essex would not be eligible to get a parking permit to park on Stephanie and would be prohibited from parking on Stephanie.
And then she, she's, everything faces her front door and her driveway, and she...
Would you like to make a comment as well? Why don't you make a comment, and we'll discuss it further? Go ahead, if you want to make a public comment.
I did not email it. I brought it in as a hard copy.
Can you give, can you give your name and your address?
Pardon me?
Could you give us your name and your address?
Yeah, I just, I can't hear you very well.
Give the name and address.
My name is Demetri Haynes. I live at 1048 Montgomery Avenue, the southeastern corner of Stephanie and Montgomery. I've lived there for 26 years and am most disturbed by the behavior of my neighbors across Montgomery Avenue with regard to the daily parking of their three, four cars on Stephanie for the last seven months. This is not a one- or two-day situation. It's weeks at a time, and there's no reprieve in sight. Also, their cars is not the only problem. They have created, they have numerous workmen who also parked their trucks and cars on Stephanie and blocked my driveway, which exits on Stephanie. Now, today, I spoke with one of the construction people and said to them, "The way that they continually position, if I had a fire in my home, the fire trucks could not get up my driveway." Now, five years ago, there was a fire next door to me, behind me, and the fireman had to use my driveway to extinguish the fire. This is another concern beside getting, you know, whatever. I've had a severe car accident. I have a torn rotator cuff, a bruised ankle, which I have to, had to wear a boot for six weeks, all right, plus concussions. I was in physical therapy for six months, and I have a difficult time getting in and out of my car. Because these people insist on parking on Stephanie all day, all night, all weekends, I am forced to pull into my driveway all the way up and use the back stairs, which are five stairs, to carry my groceries in the house as opposed to being able to park on Stephanie and walk them in the front door. Okay? The other day, I had a gentleman come in to clean my fireplace, and he had such a large truck, he had to leave. He could not back into my driveway to come and do his work. The relief that we are seeking are parking signs in accordance and compliance with the rules and regulations of the Borough of Narbith, signs that are similar to the regulation signs on the adjacent streets. I greatly appreciate your assistance, and as I said, I did not email this. I did bring it in hard copy so I could speak to the people here. Thank you.
All right. So I think as our Borough Manager was saying, one issue with the parking regulations is it would only be for the people on Stephanie. So if your house is officially on Montgomery Avenue, you would not be able to get a two-hour parking permit.
I understand, but I just wanted to let you know how difficult this situation and dangerous. When I have a fireplace man come to clean my fireplace, he cannot do his work. He had to leave.
He didn't park.
Okay.
Because there's, it was not only he couldn't park, but he could not pull back into my driveway because of the way that all those trucks were. So the gentleman left.
So you mentioned several issues. I mean, there is the possibility of a two-hour parking zone. If you, if you talk to your neighbor, the other neighbors, and they, I mean, are supportive of it. However, that won't solve the problem of people turning left or the problem you mentioned, no parking here at the corners. You've got separate issues.
That's right. There's several problems.
Yes.
And, you know, I really would like to focus on this one as opposed to...
Well, I would suggest that your next step is to talk to your other neighbors who are, have their addresses on Stephanie, and if they agree with you that two-hour parking is something that they are in favor of, you, well, either way, the Borough should know what the status of the neighbors is. If they all oppose it, I don't think the Borough Council will get involved. If you have three out of four neighbors who live on Stephanie who are interested, then I think, you know, that would be, there's a policy in place, but...
The provision does say you don't need to get the 60%, but yes, having information from the other neighbors would be helpful. And then this would go before the Public Health and Safety Committee.
There are four homes involved on Stephanie Place.
Right.
And one of them is Wendy's.
Yeah.
And then we have to get yeses from the other three homes. Because the other homes on Stephanie Place, their driveways, their addresses do not have Stephanie Place on them.
Right.
Like mine does.
So I believe that the folks who have addresses on, what our code says is, it gives us some discretion in these spots where there are a few houses that actually front on it, but I think we'd like to hear from your neighbors as well. So if they, if they, I mean, you can bring us their, their names if they support it, but that would be the next step, I think, is for you to talk to your neighbors.
So if I got, so there's four houses, so if I got one other neighbor to come in, that's 50%.
They don't have to come in.
They don't need to come in. They just need their...
It's just a petition, just their signature.
Yeah, signature.
But I want to clarify because aren't different sides of the block petition separately for parking restrictions?
Right. So currently, there's only parking permitted on the west side of Stephanie. The east side is prohibited parking regardless.
Yeah.
So technically, yes, I suppose you would need to have...
It's just the west side.
It would just be the west side that would have the two-hour restriction. Because the one side is, has no parking, then, then all four of the houses would be eligible for the parking permit, but the two on Montgomery and the two on North Essex would not be eligible for the parking permit.
The no parking sign for the one side of the street, we had done about eight or nine years ago. Because what was happening is people were parking on both sides of the street, and then nobody could get up or down.
Okay.
I wonder if I could just make a quick comment. Because this is going to have a collateral effect on your neighbors and your parking, and this is about a years' project. It sounds like the Laurel Marion Police and the building code gave this resident the, "Hey, why don't you go park over here?"
That's what they did.
Yeah, I wonder if there's some informal channels that Narbith could call and say, "Hey, folks, we're going to do this if you don't move your cars, so we're going to ask you as a professional," you know, kind of courtesy township to Borough to perhaps tell your folks that they're welcome to rent parking still at Sabine. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And give them some other alternatives before we start a formal process.
I mean, you think it's the township?
I mean, if, let's say the Bickles were parking on my street for four to six hours, I'm certainly not going to call the police on the Bickles. Do you know what I mean? And how often do the police actually go by and take it people? They're not chalking their tires, right?
I already...
I mean, to me, this is just for this kind of a situation. I'm not sitting out there staring out my window and going, "Hmm, oh my gosh, they've been there two hours and 10 minutes. I'm going to call the police." I'm not going to do that. I just would like to be able to pull out of my driveway, would like to be able to park on the driveway, would like to have my sister come over and find a spot on the street.
Okay, we hear you, and we're just discussing internally what's going to be the best procedure to help you with your, your problem.
Sorry, I didn't understand it. If they do make it a two-hour space, the people on Montgomery wouldn't be able to park down.
The people on Montgomery would not have...
But they do have driveways.
Yeah.
Do they have, they have driveways typically?
Yeah, I don't think right now.
I don't hear very well. Let me just reemphasize. I am 80 years old. I have been here 26 years, and all I want to do is park in front of my house and walk my groceries in without having to climb six back stairs at the end, other end of my driveway.
What's the procedure for establishing, like, an accessible designated space?
A handicap space?
Absolutely. Great idea.
We've done that before, I feel like, for folks who have mobility issues and are older. I don't know what the specific criteria there is for that, but...
And I think, Chief, we addressed this maybe last year, if there's a formal process or not, but one, you would need to have verification from your doctor that you have mobility issues, and then you would have to make a request of the Borough Police for such a space, and it would be reviewed with the certification or the documentation provided, make sure it's warranted.
Okay.
Okay.
So that exists, and then I know in other instances where there have been concerns about distance from driveways, we've looked at that in terms of striping out spaces that folks remain a distance away from driveways. That's something that we've handled through review processes in the past, right?
Can I say one more thing? So when I moved here 45 years ago, Mr. Ferber was the Borough Manager, and he lived, he was my neighbor. And what he had done was he had two triangles on either side of those driveways, and he would, it just said "no" in between the triangles. And then they repaged Stephanie Place, and it disappeared.
So I would just recommend that you talk to the neighbors that you haven't already spoken with and see if they're on board with it. If so, get their, get their signatures, and then let our Borough Manager know that they are both on board with changing regulations, and we will discuss it. I'm not promising that we're going to do it, but that'll be the next step.
I would suggest that the handicap space might be more suitable because, Mrs. Haynes, you would realize that you could not park on the street if you were to have the two-hour restriction. So you're requesting to park on the street as opposed to pulling in the driveway.
So you could do that in parallel, though. I mean, there could be a two-hour zone, and there could be a handicap space.
But she wouldn't be eligible because she lives on Montgomery. Her house is addressed on...
Right, but if there's a handicapped accommodation, that might be different.
So that's what I said. I don't want to take up too much time, but we'll look at the handicap, and I will be in touch with both of you with next steps for how to address this. I suspect we'll have you come before the Public Health and Safety Committee, which was in my email earlier today. So if you want to talk to the other neighbors, we'll get you on the Public Health and Safety, and we'll look into the handicap parking space.
Okay, now, do I pick up a petition somewhere, or...
So we currently do not have a form that you can use, so you can literally just use a piece of paper and go around and have your neighbors just drop their names and support.
Okay.
Or an opposition, yeah. Use, use whatever form that you would like.
Okay, yes.
It literally can be two sentences. We give our request a...
Okay. Well, I really appreciate everybody listening to us tonight. I thank you all very much. And should we just exit, right? You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you would like to go home, then yes, you're welcome.
I think you're right.
And I apologize if it doesn't look like I was paying attention. I was Googling your street address.
Yeah, we're all in Google Maps.
We're all looking at your street on Google Maps, so...
So you're at 1104 Montgomery, is that right?
No, I'm 1048.
Oh, 1048. Okay, other ones.
Laurel Marion Avenue.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is very strange. I don't know why they gave it up.
The way my home was built is the front door faces Stephanie Place, and my driveway exits from Stephanie Place.
Yeah, I see it.
Front doors on Stephanie Place, and our driveways on Stephanie Place, and our mailbox on Stephanie Place.
You could get an address changed.
It's very, very weird.
All right.
I don't want it to be easy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Have a nice day.
All right. Anybody else in the room wish to make a public comment? All right, then we will move to folks online. If anybody online wishes to make a public comment, please, I see a hand raised. So you can unmute yourself and give your name and address and ask your question.
Hi, this is Carol Marie Scanlon, Sabine Avenue, right around the corner from Stephanie Place, as a matter of fact. My question is, what is the update on the plans for developing or selling of 201 Sabine, including Sabine Park? We've heard concerning rumblings about the possible sale of the park and including, the property including the park, and what is the intent of council? And when is the appraisal assessment or RFP being sent out?
Council is taking no action right now on the appraisal or the RFP. We have received another statement of interest from a development firm that is interested in adaptive reuse of the property. It's similar to the last proposal in that they envision the park, the parking lot remaining pretty much as they are, and the building being reconfigured into housing. So council will be discussing that in executive session after this meeting. And again, if we anticipate any proposals like this coming before the public in a public meeting would be the, would be the next step. So council is taking no action at this time, but we are discussing a proposal that we received, and we still have not solicited these proposals. We are receiving these unsolicited proposals. That is the extent of the situation with Sabine, so no, no real change, but we are discussing things in executive session tonight.
So the, there is a possibility of the sale of the property, including the park? Would there be restrictions on the, on anything happening with the park to keep it a park?
There is no, council is not, we're not taking any action at this time, and...
Yeah, I could say none of the proposals involve a sale that the, the council is considering, consider a sale of the entire property. Any proposals for the property all would require or propose that Sabine Park is kept as it is, where it is. In fact, it's expanded where it is right now.
Yeah, the Borough would retain possession under the current proposals. The Borough, it would be some sort of a lease. So, no, Borough, the proposals that council is discussing do not currently involve the sale of the property, and we are not near a decision point on that anyway. There would be a public presentation before council took any serious action.
And I think council would, again, has always said from the beginning that any consideration for this would always increase the green area of the park, and there would never be a situation contemplated where the park would not be maintained or increased.
Indeed, and we passed a resolution to that effect a few years ago. All right, thank you, Carol Marie. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment? Okay, public comment is now closed. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
I'm going to vote for our council approve the consent agendas, item A through E.
Second.
Any discussion of the consent agenda? All right, we are voting on consent agenda items A through E. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Consideration items, fine A. Parking controller.
I'm going to appoint Griffin Layden as parking controller for the Borough of Narbith.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I'll take the lead here. Maggie, Chief String, wants to...
We're fortunate that we have conducted a search and interviewed several candidates, and after that review, we decided Griffin was the best candidate for it. We're very fortunate to have him here. He started on Monday, and Trump right in. He's been out for the last couple days, getting to know the land. He is a local resident, which is a lot easier, but he's getting to know our parking concerns and addressing some of those issues, and we're happy to have him.
Yeah, I already saw a comment on Facebook by someone here.
I wasn't going to say it, but...
Didn't realize that, how to get a two-hour permit, and we were properly told, yes, you need a two-hour permit. Here's how you get it. You're entitled to one, but...
I will say, your fellow residents were very good about explaining the process without Jim and me having to...
Anyway, proof that, proof that he's already on the job.
And I had the good fortune of running into Griffin as he was doing his job, and I was very pleased to meet him and very pleased to have him. It's a great addition to the Borough.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Griffin Layden. I grew up in Penn Valley, and I've been coming to Narbith since I was a little kid, and I love it so much that I moved here a couple months ago. And yeah, I just started working as a parking controller. I've already met a lot of good people, and yeah, I'm just excited to keep going and yeah, just continue to meet the good people in Narbith.
You will, you will continue to meet a lot of people. Some under slightly stressful circumstances, but a lot of them will just be up for chatting, so that's...
So we're very, we're very happy, yeah.
Thank you, yes.
All right, let's vote to approve the appointment of Griffin Layden as parking controller. All those in favor? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, budget.
Move to authorize advertisement of the 2026 draft plan.
Second. Great. So we have the draft budget, so it has everything that we've discussed. So I hope you've had a chance to take a look at everything. It has been posted as well on the website for public viewing if anybody is online and wants to pop over. It's both in the council packet information and in the financial budget as the draft. So this summarizes all of the things that we've been discussing to date, so it does reflect the proposed EIT increase, so for our revenues. And then as a result of that additional anticipated revenue, we're budgeting a $500,000 transfer to our capital fund to cover all of our capital expenditures that we're anticipating coming up over the next year and beyond. And then we are also contemplating the restructuring of the trash, trash rates, the solid waste. They were scheduled to increase anyway because our contract with JP Mascaro does increase every year of the contract, so this is year three of year four of our contract with them. So we were able to modify the solid waste fees to account for the condo request and was actually able to reduce the individual residential, single-family by $5 based on what the projected increase was, so was able to kind of make that work to be a little bit more, I think, equitable for the different housing types. And then we are proposing as well the rate increase for our sewer fees to $6 per 1,000 gallons from $5.25. Again, that is to help offset the cost of some of our larger sanitary sewer projects that we have coming up for next year, as well as our increased maintenance. And you'll see later on in our agenda, we have a capital expenditure from 2025 capital dollars for the sewer camera. That will help us to implement the program for continuously monitoring and maintaining our sanitary sewer infrastructure. So those are the big highlights in the budget. Happy to go through anything else, but I do feel like we've covered it pretty well in our prior conversations, but any, any specific... in our prior conversations, but any, any specific things that we want to touch on, or comments or questions, happy to answer them now. Hopefully, you'll pull my sleep now. Still not yet, but yeah. I only woke up at like five just before today, so better than three thirty. Thanks.
Yes. All right, any, uh, anything else? Yeah, I think that the, you want to talk a little about the big capital projects that we have coming up? I know that's some of the resident concern of the EIT increases. Well, what are we, what are we increasing EIT for?
Yeah, absolutely.
Know what we have on the down pipe.
So the big ones that we have, let me just pull that up specifically. Give me a moment.
So in the, in the past, we funded our, our capital budget by either taking out debt or just by fortuitous found money here and there that the borough has acquired. And I think that we've decided that the current lending environment is not really conducive to taking out more debt, and there's a limit to how much we can rely on windfalls. So when we have big projects coming up, we really need to start planning ahead to fund.
That's right, yeah. So the EIT is, is really driven entirely by funding our capital plan. So in terms of what we have in our, in our, in our operating fund moving into next year will more or less cover what we're anticipating spending for next year. However, it's the years, twenty twenty-seven and beyond, in terms of what we have on our five-year capital plan, that's really going to be where that money is going to be best, uh, best spent, and that's why we need to start accruing that money now to help fund those large, large infrastructure projects moving forward, because the closer we get to those projects, the, the more dramatic of an increase we would need to implement in order to raise the funds in a shorter period of time. By capturing some additional revenues through EIT increases now, we're going to be able to smooth out that process over the next couple of years to be in much better financial position, to be able to fund those larger projects, and to ensure that we have the money when we need it in a couple of years. So looking ahead for next year, our large expenditures for this building, we are looking to replace the elevator. It is very, very old, and we need to make sure that it operates correctly, so we're going to be looking at replacing that. We have our other HVAC work for, I'm sorry, this is for the, um, the library vestibule, so that one needs to be repaired. There's some water damage in the vestibule. It could lead to some more substantial kind of structural concerns, so that is a large project that we'll undertake there at the library. We were lucky to be able to acquire the new police vehicle through a leasing program, but the, uh, the payment for that is due next year, so we have our police vehicle in our capital plan for next year. We also have mandatory technology purchases, so these are radios for our police department. This is mandated by the county. They need to be updated to match what the, the county radio frequency is. Am I more or less saying that correctly? We also have our new public works vehicle, so this is our new dump truck. This is to replace an aging vehicle, so we're going to be acquiring the chassis next year at F and A. We already reviewed this, and again, later on in our, our, our schedule, we're looking at approving the capital expenditure for the outfit of this vehicle, but because the outfit is fifty-eight weeks out, we need to authorize that now to get on the schedule. So that expenditure won't be realized until twenty twenty-seven, but we do, uh, we do not actually have the vehicle currently. We will be purchasing that next year, so that shows up on our capital for next year as well. We are looking as well to replace and modernize the town clock. We have only two sides, two faces of it are currently working, so we want to make sure that that tells time nicely, and it's such a key landmark in our downtown to do a little bit of beautification for that great feature. We have also then our stormwater infrastructure projects. This is to meet our MS four permit requirements. As a reminder, this is an unfunded mandate by the DEP that we are required to meet certain reductions in pollutants and for water quality controls. So that is what our stormwater bump outs are. They are not for stormwater management, they are for sediment capture, for water quality. So I just want to make that distinction, since I know that that's not always evident, and it's, it's kind of terminology that those of us in the industry use, but for the public to realize that this isn't managing flooding from a stormwater perspective, it's to manage sediment capture relating to water quality.
But we do have flood-related projects as well.
But we do, we do have flood-related projects in the future. So again, in terms of when we're looking ahead at our five-year plan, we don't have those scheduled for next year, but we do have those scheduled for two to three to five years from now. So those are also major, major, major infrastructure projects. And then the last big thing is for our capital for next year, we're looking at doing some work in our parks, so the replacement of the, or the removal of the benches, bleachers, I'm sorry, um, and then our Elmwood Avenue pedestrian bridge, so the footbridge between Elmwood and Wynwood are the other kind of major expenditures. So, you know, next year, the, the capital expenditures, like I said, should be able to be covered more or less by the fund balance that we have at the end of this year, but those big stormwater management projects that we have, the big sanitary sewer projects, I'm sorry, I didn't actually include the sanitary sewer project.
Yeah, because that's, that's in, that's out of the capital budget, in the sewer fund now?
That is in the sewer fund now, but that one, right, so that one is the, the other big, big one that we're seeing that shows up in the sewer fund. So that one is going to be, right, of course, you know, funded in part by our sewer fees, and then supplanted by the capital. So additional, you know, sanitary repairs in the future, continual maintenance of the sanitary sewer system, the large stormwater management projects. We also have a number of items in the capital, in our five-year capital plan for various park improvements, so that'll be for future, uh, future years for us to just discuss and decide what we're actually going to be funding of the master parks plan. So it's in our CIP for now, hasn't actually, again, that's a planning document, not a funding document. This is our funding documents that we have articulated, those items that I just described in terms of what we're actually going to be spending our money on for next year. But we know that we have a lot of large, large infrastructure projects coming up that we're going to need to, to budget for, and that is a hundred percent where we're placing the additional revenue that we're getting from EIT towards those future projects.
Yeah, so, I mean, what Maggie laid out is mostly one year's worth of projects, a lot of which are not optional, failing infrastructure in various regards, whether it's a non-working, you know, a dump truck that's on its last legs, or a sewer line that is in need, in need of urgent repairs. So that's one year's worth of projects, these, these are going to continue, these projects, so, uh, that's why we're making these changes. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right, uh, let's vote to advertise the twenty twenty-six draft budget. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Let's move to nine C, which is the EIT.
Move to authorize advertisement improvements, ten sixty-seven, earned income tax increase.
Second.
Okay, why don't we get a summary of, well, the summary is that starting January first, the earned income tax would go from point seven five percent, which it currently is, to one percent, which is the maximum that the state allows. One percent is where almost every municipality is, except for some which have more due to distressed circumstances or, you know. Norbert is limited right now to an EIT of one percent, so, uh, that is the proposal on the table. And I know Mayor Deutsch, you want to, um, you want to make a statement at this time? You want, you want to talk for a while? How do you want to do this?
Um, I didn't really have, uh.
Okay.
I, I, I let my feelings be known. I, I think these capital improvements are for the benefit of everybody in the borough. I think the appropriate, it increases property values in that, in that a well-maintained borough increases the value of your property. I think appropriate way to tax is, is increase of millage. I think, um, it's, we repeatedly have gone back to the EIT, and I think this is something that affects everybody and would be more appropriately spread out among, among the property owners in the borough. I think it's just a more appropriate way to tax, uh, capital improvements that are immune to everybody's benefit in the borough. I just think it's more appropriate.
Correct.
And the other reason, I mean, I mentioned last time, but I'll summarize, is that the EIT is very much dependent on earned income, and I think, um, we're in a position this year and going into next year with unemployment figures that are unknown, an economy that is unknown, um, and I think property tax would be a more stable, uh, bet in terms of, in, in terms of taxation.
It's certainly true that property taxes don't change much. I mean, it don't change at all unless the county does a reassessment, which, when was the last time the county reassessed? Nineteen ninety-eight?
Yeah. Just in passing, I, I saw, I saw that our neighbors in Lower Marion are, their finance committee is looking at a nine-point-five percent increase in their property taxes. So I, I, I don't think it's unusual to raise a millage rate for an appropriate, appropriate cost, and I'm not, I'm not disputing that, you know, these, these expenses are not appropriate. I, I think the budget seems reasonable and very well done. I think, for the reasons stated, I think, um, it is more appropriate to raise a millage on this, on this, you know, on this problem, to solve this problem.
I can, I can tell you that council members have, have given this a fair amount of thought, and we've had a lot of questions back and forth with Burkheimer, who is the.
I saw.
Taxing entity. They manage the EIT for the entire county, um, so we had a lot of questions about who's paying it and how, how the tax burden is split up, and, uh, I guess personally, I would say that the EIT is a, is an attractive way of, of raising revenue for the borough because a significant proportion, and you've heard this, but a significant proportion of the money that the EIT raises is already being paid by Norbert residents to the municipalities where you work.
About one-third, meaning that means two-thirds is a new tax.
Well, but, you know, compared to a, a, a rise in the property taxes, which is all a new tax, so.
Right, I just think.
It's just, you know, everything's.
I just think, um, you know, I just think it's a more appropriate way of taxation.
Joe?
Yeah, so I, I agree with the mayor, honestly. I'm not really a fan of the EIT, I've always kind of been skeptical of the EIT, and I, I, I want to say that I'm fully supportive of funding the CIP, the, the capital plan, and of raising a commensurate amount, but I would like to do it through millage. And my reasons are similar to the mayor. I'm just, I feel like it is, uh, it's taxing people. I mean, it's, you can't get around that. EIT is essentially a wage tax. It doesn't tax investment income. You know, a lot of people in Norbert, I believe, do receive, you know, make income through investments that's not taxed. My own household does, you know, would save some of our income that way, but it's going to be, you know, it doesn't tax those people, it taxes people who work in Norbert. I, I think, um, in addition, I, I, I don't like what it might do to our local economy or local, you know, we have a very microeconomy in Norbert, you know, people work here getting taxed one percent off their salary, whereas in Lower Marion, they don't. I think we have to be mindful that, you know, the further we get away from zero EIT, the more we put ourselves at a disadvantage, uh, business-wise in the borough. And we're essentially telling business owners that they either have to raise everyone's salary, whereas in Lower Marion, they don't, or else the workers have to accept a one percent dock and pay, you know, and that includes the people who don't live in Norbert, but, but, um, come in from Lower Marion to work here, of which there's a significant number. And since our business district is stressed at this time, it, it's in transition, uh, I don't feel they, you know, we need this at this time. They, they, I don't feel like they need another little wound, if that, you know, to put it that way. So I'm really appreciative of all the information we've got in the last few weeks about who is, who exactly is paying these taxes. I feel like there's a little more information to be got. I'm sort of disappointed that Burkheimer wasn't able to come in for questions tonight, and that we're, you know, we're only going to hear from them after voting on this in person, um, but, uh, I, I don't feel I'm supportive of the, of the EIT tax increase.
So Maggie, can you remind us what the millage increase would be if we decided instead to raise the money through millage, like a one-point-seven mils or something?
So if we were to, yeah, look for a comparable, so one mil is approximately three-hundred-thousand based on our current property values, so it would be, yeah, somewhere around one-point-five to one-point-one, or so, I believe, to get to the five-hundred-thousand-dollar, um, revenue generation, which is what we're looking at again to fund the capital plan.
And we are just under ten mils right now, we're nine-point-nine, something?
Nine-point-eight-six.
Okay.
I mean, we discussed this, I mean, and the reasons why for the EIT. I don't, do you want to rehash it all again, or?
I mean, do you feel you want to say something?
No, I mean.
I mean, Jim wasn't here for that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's equity versus equality. For all the same reasons about the fear about the economy is why I would, again, support inequitable. Kathy, you even spoke on, you know, I have neighbors who are retired and social security income, they will pay a millage increase, they will not pay EIT millage rate. So like, we should have probably just said one percent to match other municipalities when we had the opportunity to. With an uncertain economy, I most certainly would want to increase a tax on folks that are employed versus those who are retired or lose their job. But again, I've kind of said my piece at time, but this is, we're not voting on this, we're voting to advertise this tonight, so.
Well, okay, but yeah, but tonight would be probably the last night. We could swap this for a millage increase, right? We could advertise a millage increase instead, whereas on the, when is our next meeting? Is it the fourth or something?
I'll let, I'll let John handle that question.
You would have to do an ordinance if you're going to increase the millage on the real property taxes. You do not, you could just task it by a resolution if you're not increasing. So what I'm hearing is you're not increasing the millage. EIT has its own ordinance that we've been advertising that's in place for enactment by a special meeting, by an act consideration on December first at ten thirty AM, I believe. There is also your budget, meaning we will advertise the budget, and that has to be advertised for ten days. I believe that's on the agenda for the normal December.
December eighteenth, yes.
December eighteenth. So if you were going to do millage, we would need to have an ordinance drafted and advertised for at least seven days by the eighth, what did you say? Whatever the, the normal December.
Yeah, I think this is academic, because I think, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if anybody else on council shares the concern, so.
Well, I do want to say that I appreciate, and, because I said this before, and I still agree that I would be fine with either of these. I just want to make that clear, because I think that, you know, Jim and the mayor have both laid out, like, I appreciate, um, the, the thought that y'all have put into this. I do want to say, I don't think this is a question of, of equity versus equality. I think Jim laid out very clearly why the property tax also has an element of equity to it, and so I, I don't want to, like, I think that, just want to say I appreciate the thought that y'all have put into laying out, and I'm going to support the EIT increase, because I think, and my sense is that that's where the majority is in terms of being able to get to the full funding of the, the CIP. And if there was, if there was a majority willing to do it through millage, then I would be fine with that as well. So just wanted to. So just wanted to thank y'all for.
And I just wanted to say, I, I've gone back and forth as well in the beginning. I've landed on the EIT camp for several reasons, which I can kind of reiterate. I really think that EIT, for every, for every additional tax dollar of a resident, it's more bang for the buck. We get more revenue out of that, that we can capture. I also think that Narberth is still over-reliant on property taxes compared to peer municipalities. I have concerns, and essentially, I, I also do want to acknowledge, like, all of those concerns that you've raised, but I think the benefits of EIT outweigh those concerns. Number one, like, for those lower wage earners, I think it benefits them more. And then it's also appropriately scaled to the, the lower wage earners, like childcare workers and retail, retail workers, and we have a lot of those in Narberth as well. And I also like the fact that the EIT, even though it will fluctuate, it will grow over time with wages. So I think that it has that long-term financial sustainability that a property tax would.
I'll just, real quickly, you know, I sort of went back and forth, you may remember, I sort of fought against raising the EIT in the past. I was the one who said at the last meeting, my biggest concern about raising an EIT is the uncertainty of, you know, if the economy does tank, it's not as guaranteed a funding source. But ultimately, I think, at the end of the day, we're really talking about one year's difference on where this is going to come from, because after this year, it's all gonna have to come from real estate taxes. And actually, for me personally, it's actually, I would love it to be the opposite because I'm about to retire in theory, so, you know, it's gonna, it's actually gonna nail me in my last year of full income probably. And then, you know, when I have a fixed income, I'm now gonna be raising my taxes on, on the property tax. So, you know, I also, you have to remember, we're talking about a margin increase, right? So it's, it's point oh-two-five percent. So, you know, if you're talking.
Point oh-two-five, or point two-five percent.
Right, point oh-two-five.
No, no, point oh-oh-two-five, or point two-five.
Oh, sorry. So, so we're talking about, you know, a very small increment. So, you know, on a hundred thousand dollar income, you're talking about somebody who's gonna get hit for the two-thirds who would get hit of two hundred fifty dollars. We're also capturing, my, my biggest thing about EIT is like, we're giving away money to other townships, and that really bothers me. Like, why, we should not be, for the people who work elsewhere, you know, one of my neighbors works in North Wales, and I was talking to him about this last night, and he's like, it's not, you know, you're just gonna get free money from me, you know? And he's a pretty high wage earner. It, it, it seems sort of fiscally irresponsible not to capture the money that, that we're leaving on the table elsewhere. So, but again, you know, next year, we're not gonna have a choice.
All right, Ira, you haven't spoken yet, and then I think we can, we can.
So I just want to remind you that we are, the, the, for the taxpayer, this is not an increase just in EIT, because all of us will be paying an extra four percent in school district tax, because they'll always raise that. That's the limited, the amount we're limited to, and they, I'm sure, I'm certain they will raise it.
The millage.
And that's a millage, yeah.
Right. So they, they will raise it, and then, so we're, this is a, this is a combined increase for everybody.
Yeah, and the county.
And we pay more in school district tax than we do in borough tax.
That's right, so the county and the school district are also raising.
It's like, isn't it, what was the, it was seventy-nine percent of our tax bill, something like that?
Combined, two of them combined. Yeah, that sounds about right.
So, you know, it's, it's not just one, it's not just EIT for the average person, more of the increase is coming from, you know, in property tax. So we would be just layering another tax on top of that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It is a good point.
Yeah. Please.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, so this vote is to advertise the ordinance. So after this vote, we will have a special meeting, assuming this vote passes. We have a special meeting on December first to ratify the, pardon, to, to vote, vote on the ordinance in order that it applies on January first. Okay, so that will be our final vote, assume, again. Well, let's take this vote and we'll see, okay? So we're gonna vote to authorize advertising ordinance ten sixty-seven, earned income tax increase. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? All right, it is six to one, Mr. Spear voting against. All right, so the next vote will be a vote, as I said, December first.
So the, the special meeting will be advertised December first at ten thirty AM here at Borough Hall. It will also be on Zoom, as per all of our other meetings. And the only agenda item that we will have will be to take a vote on adopting the ordinance amendment to raise the EIT. That gets reported to DCED, and then that would go into effect starting January first.
All right, and we will take public comment on that meeting on that one issue. It'll just be a one-issue meeting, so it probably will go fairly quickly. And that'll be here in Borough Hall as usual, and also on Zoom, as Maggie said. Okay. Council members? Let's move on to ten D, or nine D, I'm sorry, just the homestead exclusion.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one to establish a homestead and farmstead exclusion in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred dollars for eligible properties for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, so this is something that we did when we first instituted the EIT. It is essentially a, a partial rebate on your taxes if you own your house. It ends up being about two hundred dollar rebate, and we have to reauthorize it every year, because of the way that.
And you have to apply for it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Specifically apply for it.
The school district already has a homestead exemption and significantly more money if you get it. So just about everybody who has, is eligible for it has already signed up because they get a rebate on their school taxes.
Do we have information on how to apply for this on the website, maybe?
Yep, it's, it's on the borough website, I'm pretty confident.
You don't have to apply every year, right?
No, you apply once, you just apply once and then you're on the.
And you might as well apply for the school district.
You totally should, because, yeah, if, if you've applied through the school district, we've got your name and you're already applied, you're already counted as, and if you're not on the homestead list, you totally should, because, yeah, assuming you own your own house, if you're, if you're in a rental, or if you're a, yeah, if you're a rental, it does not apply to you, or if you're renting a house.
But it's more money from the school district.
Yeah, it's much more money.
I actually don't see it on the webpage.
Okay, it's on our webpage, all right.
We will add it tomorrow.
All right, we'll put it on. But, yeah, when I first moved here, that was one of the issues. I think the school district reminds you, in fact, and I know that they will remind you, so.
Yeah, some entity sent me a letter when I first moved in, and that's how I knew to apply.
All right, let's vote on the homestead and farmstead exclusion. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Myrie E., Sewer Camera.
Oh, boy, can I do this one?
Really? Sorry, you're tired.
I move that Borough Council authorizes the street. Hey, this is my moment. They're gonna use this on my street first, I think. I move that Borough Council authorizes the capital expenditure purchase of the sewer camera crawler system from Stephenson Equipment Incorporated for a cost of thirty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
It's like voting on your own surgical procedure. All right, Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. So this equipment, you know, purchase would allow borough staff to inspect, you know, borough-owned infrastructure and pipe work, you know, without being reliant, you know, at two AM, if there's an issue, we can pop this in there, we can check it out. It'll also be helpful for any land development projects that we have. Anytime Pico or Aqua is in town working on their mains, we can inspect our mains before and after, you know, the past three years with our ramped-up inspections. My estimate is, you know, we've probably spent fifty thousand dollars repairing damage to our mains that would have been seen had we had this in, you know, two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen. So it'll be used before and after, you know, large projects, and just, it'll give us a better sense to, you know, do more long-range playing.
Is it like remote control?
Mm-hmm. So it's basically like an Xbox controller?
Yeah, everything uses, I've been a taxi, using Xbox controller, everything uses an Xbox controller. All right.
Call ask is the first.
We have less, okay.
Less threat, less threat. I'll say.
All right. Any other discussion? Sorry.
Anyone calling asking.
Look, it gets a bit exciting about sewer pipe cameras, we gotta.
It's a part of the local government, right? We get excited about sewer cams. All right, let's vote on the capital expenditure for the sewer camera. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Let's go ahead with the HVAC system. Library HVAC system. Girl Scout.
Move that Borough Council authorize the capital expenditure purchase of a HVAC system from Centrum Mechanical for the Girl Scout room in eighty Windsor, a cost of twelve thousand two hundred dollars. I will second it.
Okay. Jeff, here you go.
So the HVAC repair for this room was in our capital plan for this year, you know, with an estimate, I think, of around fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, we're opting to go with, you know, what's called a split system, you know, they have become very common, you know, in the early days for several reasons, you know? Most important reason is its energy consumption, you know? This will give the Girl Scouts and users of that room the ability to cool it when they're in there, not weeks at a time when the room is unoccupied, you know, so they won't be wasting their money to keep that room cooled down. And also, if you remember, we just spent, you know, about half a million dollars in repairing the roof in that building. There is a lot of infrastructure for the current HVAC system in the attic space in the Girl Scout room. So any, we can remove some excess weight from the attic space, remove, had any chance of, you know, a pipe burst up there, which could potentially damage to the ceilings. So that's why we want to move with the split system.
Jeff, I had asked, do you know if there's, like, remote capabilities, so if they walk out and they forget to turn it off, somebody on a phone app will be able to?
Not remotes, but it can be, you know, actually programmed via the.
Ah, so a default to turn on, okay.
Now, as a counterpoint, I have been to a Girl Scout camp as part of Parents' Night. I'm like, unpleasant climate is like part of the experience. Like, cold at night, hot during the day, this is, this is, this is what you sign up for as a Girl Scout. I don't know if this is gonna.
Everybody else can cut, cut the, the Girl Scouts should suffer.
No, it's, it's more being attuned to nature, I would call it.
Well, Maggie, as the highest Maggie Girl Scout may have some.
Oh, she, she definitely has more experience than I do, but.
That's, that's true. I will say, the Girl Scout experience is being uncomfortable in, in spaces that are just a little too humid for your liking, yes.
Maybe we should be breaking the cycle of abuse.
I mean, I think so, yes, right. Well, I mean, I, I forgot to mention, so we had our event over the weekend, so I think I emboldened fifty young Girl Scouts to become civic leaders in my Civics one oh one class that I, that I had with them. They had some very interesting, we did a mock civ, mock council meeting, and their public comments to complain about a rat infestation, which was a, which was a, which was a made-up just scenario that they came up with, was hit very true to home. So I was like, you are all prepped and ready for this. So I think all of those Girl Scouts are ready to tackle the, the intricacies of government and will appreciate, though, that government is working to ensure that their spaces are not uncomfortable to be in.
And I think Andrea will agree on the Fourth of July, air conditioning in that space is a very nice refuge for these of us.
It is, it's necessary.
Yeah, yes, for sure.
But this is also the heating system, right, for this place?
It's the air, I think.
Air, mm-hmm. So when it says heat pump, the.
That's just the.
Cause that expression, yes.
Oh, it's a heat, it's a full heat pump, so it's one of the.
It's not.
This is just basic.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, let's, let's vote on the installation of the HVAC system for the Girl Scout room. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. No suffering needed at this time.
Chad, you have a ready.
That's right. Nine G. Well, my child spends like eight weeks at Girl Scout camp every summer these last four years, so seek out the discomfort.
I move that Borough Council authorizes the capital expenditure purchase for Public Works twenty twenty-six Ford F-550 dump truck outfit from Lancaster Truck Bodies at a cost of seventy-three thousand and three hundred and sixty-four dollars, zero cents.
Second.
Here I go again. Yeah, so this is just the outfit, you know, the outfit for a truck consists of, you know, the dump bed, the snowplow, the sprayer, you know, our emergency road lighting toolboxes, all of that stuff. So this is just getting on their schedule for the build. The aluminum dump body is built at a plant down in Georgia. They are apparently running their lead time, as you've heard us say, for a while now, over a year. They save fifty-eight weeks because it doesn't sound as harsh as a year, but this is just trying to secure our spot on their schedule.
Correct.
And, you know, this expense wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't incur this expense until we physically took possession of the truck, so that wouldn't be until the early spring of twenty seventeen.
So we get a savings due to inflation, how nice, all right.
I guess the flip is if the car is still in the way, could we potentially get a rate option?
Probably not. Price is probably, probably locked in.
Is there resale value on existing one, or?
On our truck, there will be.
But assuming one under service here, right?
Yeah, you know, I just saw a very comparable truck sells a two thousand fifteen or sixteen F-550, ours that we're selling is a Ram forty-five hundred, but that sold for around fifty-five thousand, sixty thousand, so, you know, the used truck market is still active, so.
So even a couple of years from now, it'll still be worth, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so that would be, but this expense doesn't reflect that, right?
That's just for the outfits, you know, what you get, we would pay for in twenty seventeen, we'll be paying for the truck chassis this year. Once we get the completed unit in twenty twenty-seven is when we will sell our current truck.
Right, so overall, I mean, it's not, it's a pretty expense, I think it was like a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the two together?
Yeah.
Less, whatever.
Yeah, but the less goes into like miscellaneous.
Well, it's just money, it's, it's.
Money is money.
Yeah, it's true.
One's expenditure, one's a revenue.
Yeah.
I think he's saying it goes into a different fund, but.
It's, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't like reduce the cost of it, but yes, it offsets at the bottom, the bottom line.
All right. Okay, any other comments? All right, we're voting on the capital expenditure for the Public Works dump truck outfit. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Traffic calming and safety policy, is it Chief String or who's leading on this?
Can you press it?
James, okay.
I move that Borough Council adopt the traffic calming and safety policy.
Good motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, who wants to leave the explanation, you or Chief String?
Sure. So this is a formalized policy that, based on the process that Chief String had started to develop a while back, and, and his role is Director of Public Health and Safety. It really is, and this policy is going to give that role guidance in evaluating traffic calming requests and concerns. The policy was developed over the last six months in the Public Health and Safety Committee. It was a collaborative effort between police, the mayor, Public Works, the borough manager, and the Public Health and Safety Committee. We also had a review from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, a borough engineer, and the fire company. So this policy really reflects the borough's commitment to creating safe multimodal transportation for everyone, and a response to community concerns about vehicle speeds, cut-through traffic, and roadway safety for people walking, biking, and driving. and roadway safety for people walking, biking, and driving. And it's also very timely as the Lower Maryland and Narberth Active Transportation Plan is coming to the final phase, and that will soon be adopted, and first be presented to the public and then be adopted. So, it creates a transparent process that everyone, residents, business owners, and institutions can follow, um, and to improve safety, and it's really, the purpose is to have, use our resources strategically for all of our traffic calming and safety needs, um, and it outlines most of the potential traffic calming measures, things like physical or visual measures for, uh, for, whether it's speed bumps or curb extensions, landscaping, pavement texture changes, things like that. And it also outlines eligibility criteria, um, so it's through more households, um, or business owners or institutional representatives would have to make a request, and, or it could be proactively identified by, uh, the staff or the Public Health and Safety Committee. And it also piggybacks off of the Lower Maryland and Narberth Active Transportation Plan Toolkit, which lists all of the traffic calming measures, and it does add a few others that wasn't listed on there, um, which we thought would be appropriate for Narberth as well. And basically, those measures are split up into three different categories, there's low cost, medium cost, and then capital expenditures that are for the larger, larger expenditures. And in terms of budgeting, uh, it, uh, there's a yearly allocation through the budget process, and Public Works and Police will make the annual budget request based on anticipated needs, and those larger projects that, um, that are identified will be added to the CIP inventory and scheduled through that, the CIP process. So, yeah, if we adopt this, um, I guess the next step will be to set up that webpage for the traffic calming.
Giving you lots of webpage stuff, too.
And then, um, also posting a petition and posting all of the traffic data that has been collected over the years for speed, volume, crash data, and that can be made available online as well.
Chief String, anything to...
Nothing other than thank you, Jean, for the hard work, you were able to really comment a lot of the efforts that we did, you know, maybe not formalized effectively, and so we want comprehensive documents, it's gonna be very beneficial, thank you.
Okay, so the procedure's gonna be, you get several, we get at least three people together, they tell the borough about their issue, and then, how do we proceed on our end, based on that?
The process?
Yeah, it's the process.
Uh, so the first, so it, it starts with the process of going to the MyGov portal.
Okay.
Um, and, and then that gets received, and then, um, and then the staff makes an internal review of the requests that come in, and then they may do data collection from that point, and, uh, if they decide that this should move forward, and they identify a traffic calming measure or a solution, um, they may, then they would bring it to the Public Health and Safety Committee, um, and it's through the Public Health and Safety Committee that residents can actually be engaged in the process and provide their feedback, and, and then, and then, um, it goes to implementation, which would be, the Public Health and Safety Committee would make their recommendation for an approval for the traffic calming measure, and then to full council, and then following that would be an evaluation of how that, if that was successful or not by, by the police.
So I, I think it's great to have an idea of the staff doing gatekeeping, however, I feel like if residents are turned down from their initial step, and they say, no, we, you know, if staff determines we think this is probably okay, they're probably gonna show up at a council meeting, you know, either a Public Health and Safety or a full council meeting, so what's our...
Isn't that what the policy's for, for us to say, well, we, we have...
Just wanna make sure that we're just gonna, we're gonna say, okay, in accordance with our policy, staff have reviewed this, and they've determined that there is not a sufficient problem for the borough to get involved, comfortable?
Yeah, well, I think especially, and this is one of the things that I like about this...
Because, you know, we like to go back and forth with the public on these issues, obviously, it makes us feel like we're, we're making a difference, but, um, yeah, go ahead.
But especially, one of the things I like about this, I feel like a lot of traffic calming policies be, probably because of the dynamics that you're talking about, are like structured in a way that like kind of treat requests as nuisances, and like establish a really high threshold for it even to be considered. And one of the things I like about this is that it is, like, it's, it's a, it's like, um, a little bar to entry, but then the, the process is structured around actually like what are the outcomes? And, and what are, like, what, what are our professional staff actually saying, so I, I like that balance better than a lot of, I think, other ones that I've seen, which are kind of more solving for the, just trying to keep people from, um, kind of chilling up and making a request.
And this, I'm sorry, but to add to that, it's not just the experts of engineers, it's the recognition that the folks, the boots on the ground, right, Public Works, Police, have qualitative data, observe and observational data to contribute to the evaluation. I mean, either that or really whack'em, you know, there has to be some form...
Alright, I'm just saying, we, you know, by passing this policy, we're saying we trust our staff to make the determination of what rises to a level of council, uh, Chief String?
For what it's worth, that's happening already, you know, residents call and email in, you know, I will be with them, and there's been numerous instances where, based on, you know, we're not gonna put signs here, or I looked at the volume already, so, I don't know if it, a value of concerns, but I can tell you that that's already occurring.
Well, they haven't, they haven't really appealed the council over your judgment, so that's a good sign.
They do sometimes have to do the Public Health and Safety.
Just two things, so...
Is that right?
I assume circumstances can change, right, after we sort of close a case on one area or something, maybe something else would come up in a subsequent year, you know?
There's a provision.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We ultimately have control over the process, so if we decide something needs to be looked at, that's, that's our priority.
Um, and, uh, no, I guess I don't have any other concern, okay, that's it.
So, i-if someone submits a request, like the three people in the box submits a request, what's like a reasonable expectation for how long, if you're willing to, to do something, how long would it take? Because I know that's been an issue with us, partially because we didn't have a process, but...
Well, the thing is, Chief String has already been implementing this process in a, on a smaller scale, well, less, just less formalized, and he has been, um, very responsive, so I think he's been doing a great job of kind of...
So maybe I'm in the dark, but I, I've only heard about the, the speed bumps on Iona.
Now, that took 19 years. Be able to do a little bit of that.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Prices in terms of...
Price took about four months.
Okay, I just, there, there've been others.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, um, that, that was the first one, this price, on Iona.
Yeah, they really loved it.
But how long did the price one take, I guess, I'm just trying to...
That was about five months?
Four months, five months?
Okay, well, that's...
And the speed bumps on, yeah, Meeting House was probably around the same timeframe?
Okay, so it's, it's reasonable to expect the timeframe, you know, for one that is warranted to be, you know, happy six months or...
Well, I think it depends on the measure that's implemented, but speed bumps are pretty, and it also happened to be on the road paving plan, so I think that happened to align, so there's a lot of other factors, and this policy also gives the staff the ability to kind of figure out what that schedule is, depending on all of those factors.
It does outline the complexity of each of the options, so, I mean, a lot of the low-cost ones are probably also faster.
Yeah.
Anything that involves the traffic engineer is gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Just because we have, we have to schedule with them and have to get on, you know...
Well, don't they all, they all?
Most of them.
I mean, if it's striping or something, you might be able to do it on our own, but most things do, yeah, most of the things that residents want to.
And there are times when it'll be a little bit weather dependent, like, you know, you can't do certain things in the freezing cold, uh, so it depends, it'll depend, there are a number of factors you have to look at.
But, but it's fair to say that we have a, a goal for the simple ones to, you know, to keep it under six months, so...
Yeah, I mean, that, that's reasonable, those, but it's not a hard and fast number.
I didn't...
Yeah, I wasn't looking for like, you got legislature...
I, I just wanna reiterate the chief's, Jean has spent so much time on this, you guys don't, you guys don't know how many iterations we went through at, in Public Health and Safety, and so this is really Jean's baby, and she needs to get credit for it, and as a member of Public Health and Safety, I will also say that I think this will really help us, you know, people come in constantly, almost every meeting, it's like, how come they got a stop sign, why didn't we get a stop sign? I really think this is gonna be a useful document for the public to understand what, what our choices are, what our criteria are, a clear and transparent process for getting it, uh, and I just, two things, you know, I just, Jean has like really killed her head to get this done, you have, again, you have no idea how many red lines and changes, and, and it looks like it's this really straightforward document, but it was anything but, and, you know, the complexity of balancing all these different interests were reflected in the complexity in drafting the document, so I just wanna give...
I'm all for my thing to the Jean or calming traffic.
It's, it's a very polished document, I think, and I think it compares favorably to say our, our Master Park Plan, which had a number of errors and omissions and things, so, uh, things that we get produced by, you know, our outside professionals, I think it compares very, very well to, to other documents that we've seen. So, yes, it shows a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of...
Yeah, I said this at in Public Health and Safety, but I was really proud of how the committee worked together, and all of the input that I received was like critical to making this successful, and having the collaboration of all of those different entities, that was super important, so just thank, thanks to everyone who was involved.
I'm sorry, I have one more annoying question.
You find a typo here and there.
No, it's not that typo, I just, I don't see, see it here, maybe it's covered elsewhere. Does this include stop signs and traffic signals, or is that done separately?
Not, well, it could be.
It just wasn't mentioned?
Yeah, it's not considered a traffic calming measure or a safe, well, I mean, I guess it could be considered a safety improvement measure, but...
Do we follow the same format?
It follows the same process?
Process, same format.
Because I know that's one of the things, I guess, people ask for, it's just...
I feel like often they ask for that because they're asking for traffic calming, and then they're head, that's what that is, and so now we actually are able to like do a little bit of public education with this document as well.
And, actually, when there is a stop sign determined to be appropriate, it's actually warranted, which was not the system before, hence the overt ineffective signage.
I mean, all those were...
But it is a, it is a possible outcome.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I think it's not a preferred outcome, um, I think the reason, and one of the reasons we've got this document in place is because there's, there's better ways to manage traffic flow, there's better ways to slow traffic down, and stop signs are a blunt instrument, so, yeah, but, yeah, we, we have installed stops, so... Alright, let's vote on the traffic calming and safety policy, all those in favor? Alright, it's unanimous, next again, Jean. By and I have a resignation.
And move that Borough Council accept the resignation of Rebecca Moore as a member of the Parks Recreation Committee?
Second.
Seconded by Jean.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is more informative, that as a recently elected judge of elections, congratulations, uh, she cannot hold, offer a position in the borough, so, any other discussion?
I want to recognize that Rebecca was also the Chair of the Park Planning Commission, that last year, or this year, did a lot of work on the, you know, the...
Master Parks.
Master Park, thank you, um, and I think she did a terrific job, especially, especially on the ball job.
That was, that was an extremely complicated...
Yes.
Thing to navigate, and, uh, yeah, that was a lot of...
I'll echo that, that was a very challenging thing to navigate, and she, you know, she was out in the rain handing out those surveys, she chaired all...
Oh, man, I remember those, people out for surveys, yeah.
With a lot of different interests, competing interests, and she, she did really fantastic, so, thank you for her service.
Yeah.
So, discussion, alright, let's vote to accept the resignation of Rebecca Moore from Parks Recreation Committee, all those in favor? And thanks once again for your service to the borough. Alright, let's move on to, well, the reports are in the packets, uh, committee reports, I always forget who's about to, well, F and A.
Yep, uh, we met earlier today, uh, we received a, an update from Todd Bressi about the zoning relocation, they're just at the very end of it, they're sort of, um, you know, they're checking all their references and cross-references primarily, um, and, um, what else is there to say about it, Michael, anything?
I, I think, yeah, basically, yeah.
Yeah, sounds, uh, and we also are continuing our, we had a quick discussion on the Boards and Commissions review, we're talking about, uh, reporting, reporting structure for each board and commission about where, not only what, uh, committee they report to, but also the possibility of just touching base with them at the end of the year, either through a report or a phone call, um, just to, you know, to make sure they're, there's, they're, they're still meeting and they're, they're still productive in their pursuit, um...
Yeah, I'll just say, we have, they have had contacts with individual council members in the past, and that system was not ideal, but I think the idea of getting at least one end-of-year memo, you know, here's what we did this year, at least how we're doing as a group, that's very, that's a more concrete step.
There are a couple of that can probably just have a phone call, like, like, um...
Email.
I mean, civil service, you know, might not have anything to do with it.
It might be one paragraph or one sentence.
One sentence, nothing.
We didn't meet because it wasn't necessary.
Or vacancy board, like, do you remember that you're still on the vacancy board?
Do we should mention the Industrial Development Board, like Ira?
Well, a bunch of other things.
Yeah, but in particular, Dana, Dana will be resigning from the Industrial Development Board.
And he's the last member of...
Last active member, so...
Just in time for somebody else to switch roles.
Yeah, so Ira, if you want to step up, yeah!
Yeah, just not as chair.
Oh, okay. Sweet. If anybody, they're the way there. We do need to find somebody to be the chair, so, and that's a requirement, so, you gotta, every, all of us at the table should be thinking about who we could be reaching out to, including you, Ira.
Nida, Nida has, Nida's a bit complicated, they have a, a substantial amount of money in the bank, they have requirement, a lot of requirements, I mean, they have insurance, they have a lot of, they have a stack of letters, hopefully, uh, Dana's picked those up and will have dealt with them before end of year, but, yeah, that's a... Ira is an experienced manager, I'll guide anybody who wishes to, to join the Industrial Development Authority.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I don't know is if they've acquired a new council.
We, yes, they have, they have a new council.
That's my first.
Gentleman from...
Oh, right, now I remember.
How often do they meet?
They don't.
I mean, unless there's a project, they solicit, they solicit, uh, applications for, uh, grant, loans, and then if they get one, then they have to meet.
The thing that, there's two things they need to do, one is to, you know, get with the attorneys from, and get them trying to at least understand if there's any, if given the current interest rates, if there's any market for this, if there's anybody interested, and then they need to, you know, consider projects, uh, in the borough that I'm at, fund with the monies that, you know, they already have on hand, which are typically matching funds, for projects that require non-borough matching funds. for projects that require non-borough matching funds.
Right, so should there be some state grants that require non-borough matching funds?
Well, I think they did actually, like, as during the, since I was on, if there was one donation that they made, or one...
Yeah.
Playground, it's like, there's...
The nets.
The nets.
Baseball net. All right, so, Nida needs members? Is that it, James? Do you have more from F and A?
No, that's it.
Okay. Infrastructure?
They didn't meet in that timeframe.
All right, Public Health and Safety?
We met, we met last Friday, other than the traffic calming policy, we had the Price Avenue Striking Pilot, we actually voted to table our decision on recommendation to next month, there was some mixed feedback about the spacing around the driveways, so the engineer will reevaluate the design around the driveway, and then we'll talk about that next month. Manager Dobbs also talked about parking policy changes related to, actually, do you want to speak to that, because I don't remember the details of that?
It was just kind of some preliminary ideas that we've been discussing, kind of staff level, about some parking policy updates, just with Paul leaving, Griffin starting, we've kind of noticed there's been just the transition of information and kind of what's been enforced and what should be enforced, and what our policies say, and kind of some of the things that people are encountering in terms of kind of hurdles with parking, and some of the complaints that we're hearing, we just want to make sure that we're addressing some of those in a kind of systemic and easy to administer way, part of it is that the parking policy from the admin side can be a little bit cumbersome, so we're just looking for ways to kind of streamline that and make it a little bit more user-friendly, so, they're not really ready for primetime at this, in this context, we had discussed it at the PH and S meeting, so I think we need to kind of retool it, go back and think about some other ways that we can address that and come up with a little bit more of a formal process that you can then review, and I, we were just kind of chatting about it, but it's something that I'll continue to work on and present at a future meeting in a more formal kind of written format, and we can take a look at how that makes sense.
Yeah, so I think we said maybe December we would have draft recommendations that we can take a look at.
It's pretty fast, okay.
And then Main Line Greenway, that Lower Marion is planning to implement that in 2026, so Narberth will have to plan around that, and then the Lower Marion and Narberth Active Transportation Plan, that will be publicly presented, hopefully next month, is what they, what they said, but we're not really sure, they didn't set an exact date, and then that will be up for adoption, and we talked about the details of what that would mean, it's basically a living, breathing document that's a map with existing conditions, plans, improvements, and then recommended network.
So if Lower Marion is doing a ribbon cutting for the Main Line Greenway, you should be part of it, as a Narberth representative, just make sure that we have a seat at that event, if they're going to have some event.
Yeah, I don't have any details yet, or...
If you hear anything, yeah, we want to see that too.
And then the last update was around the Montgomery Avenue Corridor project, which some of the council members were at that meeting, and an update on that, so we talked about, and details around that, and we won't see anything in the public view until January or February, I believe.
And they're still planning to do, like, a Narberth meeting? Or are they planning to do a Lower Marion, where's the physical meeting going to be to present to the public, is it going to be in Lower Marion, in Narberth, both?
I don't think they decided on...
Yeah, I think they said that.
Okay.
So it'll be combined, Lower Marion and Narberth?
It'll be one meeting?
It'll be one meeting.
Probably be in Lower Marion.
The way they described it was, they'll do different segments of Montgomery Avenue at different times, so if...
So if you're zooming, it's kind of...
So if Narberth residents wanted to attend, they could just arrive for the Narberth segment, or they could stay for the whole thing.
All righty. New business, old business, I want to go over the planning commission's schedule for the next few months and how it's going to bear on some council discussions, I'll also point out that Lower Marion did pass their leaf blower ordinance, so I'm hopeful that we'll be dealing with that ourselves in the near future, what do we think, is that we are ready for that next month, or is that going to be taking more time, it's the status of the leaf blower discussion?
I've not been, I'm not aware of the issue, but I'm not sure, I wasn't aware of Narberth ones before, with one themselves.
Narberth wants to basically clone the Lower Marion regulations and put them in place.
Yeah, so since they've adopted it, we'll just, I'll reach out to Lower Marion and get a fund draft of the ordinance, and we will just tweak it to...
Okay.
Make it ours, and then we'll have that before you in December, so that shouldn't be too big of a lift.
And you go to Public Health and Safety first?
I mean, we kind of gave it our blessing already.
It's been to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been to council, I'm not sure it needs to, it needs to go to a lower level, we all kind of agreed to move forward. Okay, so, the other topic I wanted to go over was the planning commission's schedule for the next few months, and how it bears on council's discussion for zoning changes. So, we had a meeting with borough staff and with Adam Crowe from the Planning Commission, and Adam Schertz?
Sean Schenz.
Sean Schenz, who is our MCPC consultant, trying to talk about their availability and what would make sense for timing, so this is what we came up with, we expect, so right now, they're, they're going to be working on recodification for the next couple of months, we expect the January 5th meeting, they will have a final review of the recodification ordinance, recommend it to council, and they are going to, they've already discussed the Montgomery Avenue zoning recommendations, they are going to be discussing the downtown, 4A district as well over the next couple of months, so January 5th, they're going to, we presume, finish the recodification, January 15th is our business meeting, and at that point, we will have the opportunity to authorize advertisement of the recodification, and depending, if council wants to spend a significant amount of time on the recodification, obviously that might take more time, but I am anticipating that at least the content-neutral aspect of it will not be, will not take a lot of council time, you can let me know if you, if you want to get into the weeds, but, the recodification is supposed to be content-neutral, we were told that they have identified, as of course they would have, a few low-hanging fruit or tweaks that they think ought to be made to the code right now, where they feel they've identified clear, clear changes that will not take a lot of time and effort to fix, that ought to be just done as well, so I think we will, we will have recodification, we may have a few of these low-hanging fruit points that will be in front of us to make changes in January, the February meeting, MCPC will do a presentation of housing affordability to Planning Commission, this will, this is a report on general strategies that can be used for, to support affordable housing, I think it'll, it'll mention, and look at some of the proposals for the zoning changes that we have, but also go beyond that, and February, okay, February 19th, recodification ordinance, end of February is when we anticipate an open house to discuss potential zoning changes, and I think that we talked about having MCPC adapt its report to Planning Commission to something that the public can see with, like, you know, stations and discussion, a more informal presentation similar to the, some of the master plan, comprehensive plan discussions, or similar to, some of the other things we've done where the public is invited to explore different ideas, so, end of February, we have a determined one, open house, and then March 5th, which should be our workshop meeting in March, that would be a time when we can come back to discussing zoning changes, after having had the recommendations from Planning Commission, after having had a response from Planning Commission to all of our questions that we sent them, so MCPC will also be assisting Planning Commission, responding to the questions that council had, so March 5th, assuming all that's been addressed, assuming we've got the recodification behind us at that point, that's when we would move on to discussion of zoning changes. So first, let me, let me propose that I make sure council members are comfortable with that schedule, what's coming up, I know that zoning is a big issue, so, I want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that timetable, all right?
I guess, just, you said that the public meeting, like, the informal thing, is end of February, I mean, I want to make sure we give the pub, the public the sense that they have enough time to digest that and put in their own comments, it sounds like you're talking about doing, voting, like, within a week?
It'd be a discussion, the voting will be at the workshop, there'll be no votes at the workshop meeting, so it'll be a discussion.
Okay, that's what I was trying to...
We'd be voting at the business meeting, so it'd be, you know, three or four weeks.
Okay, okay.
And what I'm worried about this schedule now is that we could post this on our webpage.
Right now.
Which, like, right now, you know, and aside from it not being President's Day weekend, folks really have, of, what is it, four months?
Yeah.
Hey, this is what to expect, here are the documents, they are transparent, nothing's last minute.
It might slip, right, I mean, if the recodification takes extra time, then everything slips.
Well, so we hope.
But it won't take less time.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the fastest thing we've...
Yeah, there's the footnote.
Okay, I do want to add that there is another option that we can take on top of this, if indeed we pass a few minor tweaks to the code when we do the recodification, we could also pass what I consider to be non-controversial or unanimous changes to some of the zoning that we've talked about, which is, we could say, on Montgomery Avenue, you have 45 feet right now, you can have four stories, we can clarify the rule for how much business you need on the ground floor of a mixed-use building, so I think we can make a couple of changes where council, I think, is in agreement about what the changes should be, and, you know, the contentious things are mostly about extra height and about changes to parking requirements, so, we can save those for later on, but the technical changes, oh, and then the number of doors required in a multifamily, multifamily house, there were a few, there's like, there's like, you know, three that have been mentioned that I think everyone in council is happy to change, so if we can make those changes quickly and easily, that might be the best opportunity to do it, and then save our discussion time for the points at which there is disagreement or concern.
The only downside to that is, I kind of like that idea, the only downside to that is then you're amending, like, 5B potentially, like, depending on what we decide on height, like, you're going to do that two months, two months later or a month later, like, I, but, but, and so, does it really matter?
I think the general agreement is that four stories by right should be allowed in 5, in 5B.
And at 45 feet.
With the height of 45.
Which it already is.
It, yes, it is, but it depends on the building.
Yeah.
So the explanation for this was, if you have a mixed-use building, you're only allowed to have three stories at 45 feet, whereas you can have an apartment building at 45 feet, but four stories.
My only point is...
It's true.
Is it weird just to, you know, change 5B only with the possibility that you're going to change 5B again two months later, you know, from a, from a builder's point of view, if they know that, they're going to wait, so, why, I don't know.
I think there's, there's no guarantee it's going to be done in two months, I think we're, if we start discussing in March, we could come to a vote soon, but, you know, things can change, so I...
I don't feel strongly, I'm just throwing out.
Well, we can discuss that, that's a possibility, but in general, the rest of the schedule makes sense to everybody, we can debate whether we want to do an extra touch or not. Okay, all right, that is what I had, Maggie, did I miss anything, based on, I was just going, I was going by your emails.
I was going to say, I think you captured the name just...
Thank you for summarizing everything that came out of that meeting, it was, trying to make sure everything lined up, took a while, but I think it's worth it, and, yes, it will be a timeline that we can put on, and the public know that this is likely, and these discussions are likely to be. Okay, comments for the good of council?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Just wanted to mention that last Saturday, the Shade Tree Commission organized the tree planting, has planted 38 trees around the borough.
Thanks.
Very nice. I wanted to mention that today's transgender day of remembrance, it's in recognition of people, of individuals who sadly lost their lives to violence against transgender people, there is, as, is a reading being sponsored by Narberth Haverah that is happening right now, or maybe has just concluded, you know, I would have been there, were not for this meeting, but I think a lot of people are there in spirit, and I just wanted to mark that.
We should mention that Maggie, me, Jean, Michael, I feel like somebody else.
Heidi.
Heidi, from the Planning Commission, all went to an affordable housing program put on by, actually, Chester County.
Chester County.
It was really informative, really interesting, and I think we all came home with interesting ideas about, you know, where there are blockages, or easy things you can do, more complicated things you can do, that I think can inform some of our zoning discussions while we get there, but it was really good, I'm glad they put it on.
All right, thanks, everyone, we will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss a real estate proposal relating to 2017, as discussed earlier, and the personnel matter, I think that's it, I'll take, we will not return for a vote after this meeting, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor of adjournment, Ira?
No, Ira will stay.
All right, I need a one, two minutes.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.